Good evening, everyone. We will call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee to order on Thursday, July 13th, at 6:00 PM. And as always, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is that I am the United States of America and the United Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We will move on to our audio disclosure. At the beginning of all of our meetings, we do check with everyone in the hall to see if anyone is recording this meeting other than the town. If anyone is recording, would you please identify yourself? Not seeing any? Thank you very much. I will take this moment, sorry, I will take this moment just to mention that we are aware of the audiovisual issues with the cable broadcast. They are expected to, the issues are expected to continue this evening. Unfortunately, there is a plan to make corrective, take corrective action regarding the equipment so that there will be a functioning system in the future, but tonight, the expectation is that there will still be problems with the AV broadcast. The entire meeting is being recorded, and if the broadcast is cutting in and out, it will be posted later on as we do with other recorded meetings that we do in other locations. So just a little information about where we're at. Okay? Before we go on to our next agenda item, we do have a presentation this evening from the Murdoch Trust. The Murdoch Trust, we are very glad to have our guests here. Would any of the members be open to a motion for rearranging our agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we take out of order the presentation from the Murdoch Trust Fund.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Right, those in favor, Karen?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Alicia?
Yay.
And the Chair votes aye. So we will be welcoming our guests. Please come on up. Feel free to come close to the microphone. We do have guests here from the Murdoch Trust who are here to present a check to the school district. And so we'll allow you, please, to introduce yourselves.
Thank you. I'm Jack Ledoux. This is Tom Connor. Glenn Hunt over here. We're missing Chris Kazavant and Keith Barrows as our other two trustees. The board is in the healthiest shape it's been in years, so Glenn and I are kind of eventually fade out and let these young people take over. So we've got good people working here. Mr. Murdoch was an amazing man. And fortunately, he was very civic-minded, and he left his estate to the town to build this high school, which in those days cost $119,000 for the school and the land. And also, his estate also paid for education for the whole town until about 1920. So it's an amazing story. Obviously, he couldn't continue to do that, but he organized a board to invest his money and make sure it was healthy enough to give the town gifts. And we're very fortunate and honored to be his representative in giving the town another $175,000 check tonight. So we feel he gets a recog, he needs a recognition. I think the people need to know about this man. So that's why we choose to give it publicly instead of privately. So that's, that's all there is to it. That's the story we have for you tonight.
We'll be back again next year. On behalf of the school committee, the school district, and the families of Winchandon, we say a big thank you to Mr. Murdoch and the Murdoch Trust. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
As you recall, these are funds that the school district intends to use for primarily experiential learning opportunities, whereas in past years, we have needed to rely on information for the funding, for the operating expenses of the, of the district. We now are in the position where we're able to use these funds really for the things that really make a difference in students' learning opportunities. So we are really, really glad for that. And seeing as we haven't even left our agenda item yet, I think the gentleman might want to...
Can I take a quick picture, please, Chair?
That would be great. Yes, absolutely. Perhaps with the school committee and the trust fund members? Yes.
All of us?
Try to make this show.
Get dressed up.
Trust and Mr. Murdoch.
If I may, just a couple of things, just so the folks know, a couple of items that we did this year with Murdoch Trust Funds. One of which was Nature's Classroom Trip for our entire grade five class this year. Went to Nature's Classroom up in Maine, fully supported by Murdoch Trust, so very, very grateful for that. And the other one, it's actually an article in the Gardiner News today, is a service trip to the Dominican Republic that a number of our high school students participated in, seven or eight students, faculty members, that went down and did some really great volunteer work, built a house, quite literally, in the Dominican Republic a couple of weeks ago. So those are a couple of things that the Murdoch Trust has funded here over the past year, as, also a number of other field trips and other things. But those are some really big items that we're really grateful to have them support. So huge thanks to Murdoch Trust.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. That brings us to the public comment portion of our evening. This is where our guests here in the hall...
Mr. Chair, do we have to make a motion to accept the check?
Yes.
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 We sure do.
So may I make that motion?
Yes, please.
Yes, so do I need to make it formal, or will that work? Do I need to make it more formal, or will what I just said work?
I think that works. Greg, do we have a second?
Yes, you do.
All right. We have a motion and a second on accepting the $175,000 check from the Murdoch Trust and Murdoch Fund to go towards the Winchandon Public Schools. Is there any discussion?
Let's hope not.
Okay. Take a vote, starting with Alicia?
Yay.
And Greg?
Aye.
And David?
Aye.
And Karen?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. It is unanimous. Thank you again to the Trust, and thank you, Karen, for reminding us. Okay. So that officially brings us to our public comment section. Our public comment is an opportunity for folks within our district to share information that they would like to with the school committee. Tonight, we have our typical opportunity for comments. We will limit those comments to three minutes for each speaker. Each speaker is welcome to speak more, to, up to two times. The school committee asks that the topics that are discussed remain similar to or related to the topics that are within the purview of the school committee, which of course includes the supervision, hiring, and firing of the superintendent, the budget that we approve, and policymaking that the school district is a part of. And so with that, we will invite anyone from the hall that would like to address the school board tonight for our public comment. Hello. You can just say your name and then please.
Good evening. My name is Candace Frye. I am an employee of the Winchandon Public Schools. I am a teacher at Murdoch High School and have been since August 22nd of 2018. I'm a very proud member of the faculty of the Winchandon Public Schools. It is my choice to travel 35 minutes a day to work here, although I have frequent job offers closer to my home, and quite frankly, more monetary compensation. I want it to be very clear that I choose to be at Murdoch High School because I love Murdoch High School and the Winchandon Public Schools. I am not an alum of Winchandon Public Schools, but I am now an adopted member as far as I am concerned. And coming from the original Blue Devils of Leominster, I must say, that is a very, very difficult thing for me to say. I'm here tonight on my own time. I would like to thank those members of the committee that replied to my June 1st email in which I writtenly expressed my support for Superintendent Thad King. I will refer to him as Mr. King or Superintendent King because that is the respect in which he deserves. And it has not been demonstrated by many members of the public or in some of these What I would like to say is that I am very disappointed in public commentary that involves speaking out on private personnel matters. The public is not permitted or entitled to private personnel information. Many public, many people are speaking in public about matters where I am curious as to how they're receiving this private information. And I feel that the school committee is being swayed by opinions versus facts. I'd like to remind the school committee that you voted to hire a search committee, an outside search committee. And that is the search committee that recommended that Winchandon Public Schools hire Mr. Thad King. It's very disheartening as someone who has given their heart to Winchandon, as I have, to read and hear public, being publicly berated when I know and my colleagues know all the things that Superintendent Thad King has done for this district. And quite frankly, he cannot comment on many of the things that are being thrown out in I'm disappointed that the severity and seriousness of a meeting and the agenda items is going to happen this week during the number one vacation week in the United States when many people who would like to attend this meeting are out of town. So I'm just going to say that.
Sorry, excuse me, just one moment. We've reached the three minutes for your comments. You may have the opportunity to stay if no one else would like to speak. Would anyone else like to address the board at this time? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I am here without data points. I am here because I am a human being who has worked for Superintendent Thad King. He has brought us through one of the most difficult time periods in modern history for education. There are many things that he has done for our school district, for parents, for families, for children, for faculty, that go below the radar. I'm here in support. I am not afraid to speak out. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. King for everything that he has done for me personally, and to thank him for everything that he has done for this school district. And once again, I would like to remind the public that if they have questions about personnel matters, they're not necessarily entitled to that information, but the school committee has a responsibility to get deeper into some of those things. I have never felt safer at Murdoch High School, which also contains Murdoch Middle School, as I have this spring under the direction of Ms. Mary Jane Rixon. Mr. King has always put safety of students and faculty above everything, and that's the thought that I would like to leave the public with tonight. And again, thank you, Mr. King. And I am here to speak for those who do not feel comfortable speaking because you know me, and I will say what needs to be said, and I am not afraid to stand in my truth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Others that would like to address the board this evening? Yes, please. Please just state your name.
I'm Hunter Foster. I am an employee of Winchandon Public Schools. I work at Murdoch High School. I was hired in late July of 2019 and started the notorious COVID year. And I would like to say that though, you know, Murdoch was the first place that I got a job as a teacher, it's definitely the place that I want to stay. And when I started working here, I drove 80 minutes a day to come to work at Murdoch because I wanted to work with Mr. King. I moved my whole life up here to work at Murdoch because I wanted to continue to work with Mr. King and with all the other people that make this such a remarkable town. When I got hired, I had some colleagues from previous jobs that had actually been on walkthroughs through Murdoch in the spring of 2019. And they told me, when they heard that I got hired, that there were definitely some people in the school system that were limiting the growth, but that there were people who were there who wanted to bring Murdoch up. And one of those people that they were talking about was obviously Mr. King. And I feel like he has worked tirelessly the past few years to make Murdoch what it is today. I have spoken with, you know, people who have been in our school and in other schools, and they have talked about how the feel at Murdoch is very welcoming and that we as a staff genuinely care about our students. We want to do what is best for them. We are eager to help them, not only in their educational pursuits, but in their, their whole life pursuits. And I feel like that kind of focus took shape when Mr. King was in the high school. And I think that keeping him as superintendent will carry through and make that for the whole district. I would really be sad to see Mr. King go. And it has been overwhelming all spring to see the way that he has been treated by the public in this district, and...
Sir, I'm so sorry if I could just interrupt you for just one moment. We've, we've reached our three minutes, so I would just like to check with the folks in the hall if that's okay. Would anyone else like to address the board? Go ahead, sir.
All right. I think that, you know, we've, we've had him as the actual superintendent for, for just about a year at this point. And one thing about schools and school systems is it takes time for change. It really does. And I think that letting him work through the rest of his contract, we will begin to see that change take shape. I have full faith in that. That is all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments for the school committee this evening?
My name's Angelina Delasanta. I am a recent Murdoch alum, which I'm so proud to be able to say. And I feel like I made some of my comments of the last meeting kind of clear on how I felt about Mr. King, and I still completely stand by that, but I thought I'd take the opportunity on this night specifically to be able to just come up and talk as a person who has been a student under Mr. King's administration and kind of speak to that a little bit. You know, I, along with some of my peers back there, we were in, we were in Murdoch during COVID, during Mr. King's shutdown. And I think that that kind of speaks to what I've been able to experience, like his administration, how it's changed, and how he's been able to adapt to what anyone would describe as unprecedented any day. And I think that I remember watching Mr. King's check-ins that he used to post to YouTube for all of his kids, like, and I remember watching them and thinking, wow, this kid, this guy actually cares. Like, this guy, he truly cares about his kids and wants his wellbe, wants their well-being put to the utmost. So I think that's something to recognize. And, you know, I feel like I have a unique perspective because I have been on the school committee, and I have been extremely involved in Murdoch and worked with a lot of faculty and staff closely with a lot of the community endeavors that I've had. And, you know, I was actually on the Dominican Republic trip that Mr. King graciously let us, gave us funding for, which was absolutely amazing. And I've, I've been a part of all the extracurricular activities with Student Council and NHS and all these great things that make me so proud to be a Murdoch student and now Murdoch alum. And I think that Mr. King deserves more credit for what he's been given. And I think that, you know, given the situation and a lot of the public opinions that have been given out, he hasn't been able to comment. And if any of us were in his position, that is very difficult to do. So I think that taking all of it with a grain of salt and remembering that he's a human being, just like I'm a human being, and I don't think anyone would be involved in this district if they didn't want the best for our kids. And yes, things go haywire sometimes, and those are human mistakes, and I completely understand that. And I think most people do. But I do think that, sorry, I'm checking your time here. I think that he deserves credit, and I think that anybody in his position deserves credit. And I won't say much more, but I am a very, very proud Murdoch alum, and I am so happy to be able to have worked with all of you and Mr. King over the last year and get to know how this, how our school system works and all the inner workings of it. But I sit here today using my voice supporting Mr. King. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, sir? Just state your name, please.
Good job, baby. Antonio Delasanta. 20 banner plays, apartment 5B, 49 years a resident, taxpayer, and I know a little bit about the Winchandon Public Schools. All I'd like to say is I want to address you, the Chair, and the committee. I don't address nobody else, but however, do the right thing. What I'm telling you is this, I'll sit here, I remember you on Wink, so, yeah, I go that far back, Mr. Mr. Wyng. Yeah. W-Y-N-Q. So anyway, do the right thing. Do what's right, follow your heart. Do what the voters put you here to do. If not for anything else, for the children of Winchandon, of which I was, I graduated in 92, sir, this school here. And I happened to work in the district for 27 years, and I made choices that were bad, and I'll admit that. I'll stand here and do that right now. However, the bottom line is you treat people the way you want to be treated. If you don't want to be treated like a bad human being, then you get out. And if you haven't noticed, smart people have. I'm looking you right in the eyes, sir, as the, I don't know what you are, the dean of Worcester State, I don't know. Good. However, that's all I got to say. And I have, and I have a lot of appreciation for the Winchandon Public Schools. I've seen a lot of things, more than you understand, and I'd be happy to share anything with you. But for that, I thank you. I thank you for the opportunity to speak publicly because I think that it's important. It's important for people to understand that you treat people the way... And yes, things go haywire sometimes, and those are human mistakes, and I completely understand that. And I think most people do. But I do think that, sorry, I'm checking your time here. I think that he deserves credit, and I think that anybody in his position deserves credit. And I won't say much more, but I am a very, very proud Murdoch alum, and I am so happy to be able to have worked with all of you and Mr. King over the last year and get to know how this, how our school system works and all the inner workings of it. But I sit here today using my voice supporting Mr. King. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, sir? Just state your name, please.
Good job, baby. Antonio Delasanta. Twenty banner plays, apartment 5B, forty-nine years a resident taxpayer, and I know a little bit about the Winchendon Public Schools. All I'd like to say is I want to address you, the chair, and the committee. I don't want to address nobody else, but however, do the right thing. What I'm telling you is this. I'll sit here, I remember you on Wink, so, yeah, I go that far back, Mr., Mr. Wyng. Yeah. W-Y-N-Q. So anyway, do the right thing. Do what's right, follow your heart. Do what the voters put you here to do. If not for anything else, for the children of Winchendon, of which I was. I graduated in ninety-two, sir, this school here. And I happened to work in the district for twenty-seven years, and I made choices that were bad, and I'll admit that. I'll stand here and do that right now. However, the bottom line is you treat people the way you want to be treated. And if you don't want to be treated like a bad human being, then you get out. And if you haven't noticed, smart people have. I'm looking you right in the eyes, sir, as the, I don't know what you are, the dean of Worcester State, I don't know. Good. However, that's all I got to say. And I have, and I have a lot of appreciation for the Winchendon Public Schools. I've seen a lot of things, more than you understand, and I'd be happy to share anything with you. But for that, I thank you. I thank you for the opportunity to speak publicly, because I think that it's important. It's important for people to understand that you treat people the way you want to be treated. You want to be a man, sit across the table from me, kind of like you're doing here, sir. That I appreciate. So Mr. Wink, Mr. LaPointe, and Karen something or other, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other, other folks that would like to address the school committee? Hello, welcome.
Hello. My name is Chelsea Harris. I have two kids in the system, the school system, and as you know, we've been struggling with the special ed department for about five years now. My son was just diagnosed with autism, and I've had a lot of concerns and complaints that have gone to the superintendent that were unanswered. And I know a lot of people tonight said that their opinions versus facts, but they're not. I have the facts. I have the emails and the phone records. And as soon as I started speaking here at the meetings, all of a sudden I was getting calls and emails back. And that's not right. And I do agree, I think Mr. King is great in the high school, but I think he's missing that the school is more than just high school. It's the kids that are struggling in elementary school. It's the kids that are getting ready to go into middle school that aren't going to succeed because they don't have the supports that they need. I've been asking for help for five years, five years of unanswered emails and calls. And I just think that it just needs to be known that they're not opinions. These are facts, that I have proof that I have showed everybody on this board. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here would like to address the school committee tonight? Hello?
Out of the block. They all know me. Just to set a quick thing straight, Thad King was one of three finalists on the board that was selected for superintendents that were coming out. That is public knowledge. Public knowledge can be found on the internet. We have the Freedom of Information Act. We can pull any information that we want as citizens, even to include the minutes from these meetings. If we look back at prior reactions from, say, six months ago to current, there has been a lot of public interest, and a lot of it, you know, if you put two and two together, you can start seeing the themes of everything that's going on within the districts and the crucial attacks on the character of Mr. King, not just under him, but he is the captain of the ship or the CEO of the company. We used, say, four or five meetings ago, the utilization of the management of a baseball team. If the team sucks, who gets the first one that gets to shoot? The manager. So if the school district's falling down, the sped department is in crumbles, and personal identifiable information is going out to the wrong people, yes, the individual does get the blame, but when it comes down to it, doesn't the management take the blame as well? There's not a public attack on Thad King's personal performance at the school. I've seen him as a principal. I've seen him as a superintendent. Superintendent being during the COVID era, he was the man at the time that we needed to fill that position, and I believe he did an adequate job. But we are moving. We are lacking in some areas, mainly the Special Education Department. And if everybody's been paying attention like they have been saying, we know that it is a huge critical asset to this community. Posting has been posted out, what, June seventeenth-ish, for more teachers to come to the district. My question to the school board is, has that post been reposted out, or is it sitting on the bottom of a query on Mass Careers or wherever the job posting's posted? Not a lot of new graduates from Fitchburg State, WPI, Worcester State, any colleges around really that get a teaching degree and certified from Massachusetts are not going to know to look on Mass Careers. They're going to look there for the teaching jobs, they're going to find out which one's close to their house, and they're going to click submit. If our positions in this district are not resubmitted constantly, and it's sitting on the bottom of the query, it's not going to pop up. We're not going to get the applicants that are needed, and therefore, we're going to have these shortfalls like we have been, especially with the Special Education Department. I would like to have the board look into that and see where it sits. School season starts soon, and the kids only got like a month and a half left. Where are we sitting on these new hires for these new individuals coming in? Is there a plan in action to have someone step in that is qualified to run a department like the sped department or to process the forms for IEPs and get these children the helps that they need, they deserve, that's their right? This is why we're all here. This is why I keep coming back. It's not a personal vendetta. I just want to see the kids get their education that we've all fought for. And if not, then we're doing them an injustice. That's all I got to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Others? Speak to the school committee this evening. Other comments for public comment? Okay. Thank you, everyone. Thank you as always for your comments. That brings us to our consent agenda. For the board members, we do have minutes from May eighteenth in our packet. Those minutes, I believe, were emailed a little while ago, and they're in your packet tonight. If there are not any corrections or additions to the minutes, happy to take a motion if there is one.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, go ahead.
Karen? I did send a correction to Liz, but I think that's easy enough for her to change. It's a minor change, so I think we can make the motion to accept the minutes with that minimal change.
I'll second it. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Karen, what was the change?
Um, just, she quoted me as saying the law regarding public comment time, and it's actually that there was no law. If you look under, I want to say it's page four.
Page four, the large paragraph.
Yes.
Everyone good with that? The change that Liz will make?
And I, and I just have one minor change if I could. This was actually my first meeting, and I was in attendance, and I'm not on the attendance list.
Oh.
Just for posterity, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay.
But you are mentioned throughout.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote, starting with Karen.
Aye.
And David?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Alicia?
Yay.
And the chair votes aye. All right. That brings us to our superintendent's report, and I believe we're starting with a food service contract update. Yep. So Ms. Babinski.
So as you know, we went out to bid for our food service management company this past spring. This is the first round where we're using the updated template that DSE has been working on for the last few years. The RFP went out, we had two, we received two proposals and awarded the contract to Fresh Picks Cafe based on the criteria. DSE has also put forward a template for the contract that has been completed between the district and Fresh Picks Cafe. That contract did need to be on their template and approved by the Department of Education, which we received early this week, and so we are ready to move forward with signing the contract. I believe Liz shared that in the group folder, but basically, it, it just allows us to begin getting them in here so that we can be ready for service on the first day of school and start this year with the new, new vendor.
Mr. Chair.
Greg.
I'd move to approve the food service management company contract as reviewed and approved by all parties and DSE and to authorize the Director of Finance and Operations to sign the contract on behalf of the district.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion on the food service contract? Okay. We'll take a vote, starting with Alicia.
Yes.
And Greg?
Aye.
And David?
Aye.
And Karen?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, a district update from Mr. King.
Sure, thank you. Just a quick update on some personnel issues, specifically the openings and, and kind of the committees surrounding a few of those. So just very quickly, the, we have three sort of leadership positions open, middle school principal, director of student support, and elementary principal. All of those, we, we did sort of wait a little bit at the request of the committee to see if we got more applicants. I can say at this point that we do have, each one of those positions has multiple applicants throughout. I believe the, the middle school principal has at least six applicants. The director of student support has at least four, and I believe the elementary principal position has at least a couple applicants at this, at this time. I checked earlier this afternoon. In terms of the committees, to begin those, to begin those searches or to be, begin filling those roles, you know, we, we did ask community members and parents and guardians to reach out to us if they were interested. So we will get those committees up and running next week. We have folks to chair each of those committees at this point. So we, we will be reaching out to those who have expressed interest, that are, you know, parents and community members. The only real caveat to that is that we'll limit those who are interested to one committee so as to limit scheduling issues as best as possible. So these, these committees will be doing their interviews and their work, you know, concurrently. So, you know, vacation time already is, is limiting scheduling issues. So when folks sit on multiple committees, that presents, you know, sort of complexities. But there have been many folks who have expressed interest. We have no interest in, in limiting any of those folks, so, you know, they should expect to be reached out to early next week by someone to start, start that work. Where the process is typically, you know, we would put all the applicants' resumes, if you will, in, in front of the committee as a whole to decide who would be interviewed. The committee as a group would also talk about the questions that are asked. The typical process for that is to ask all the committee, all the members, or excuse me, all the applicants the same questions, just for equity purposes. They would agree on those questions, schedule with the applicants, and get those interviews going. Typically, what would happen, depending on the number of applicants, is that a, a finalist or up to three finalists could be forwarded to whoever the hiring manager would be. In this particular case, all of those particular folks report to the superintendent. So finalists would be forwarded to the superintendent for sort of a final decision after the finalists are cho, chosen. It's just a pretty standard process. The superintendent does not participate. I would not participate in any of those committee meetings or any of the decision-making process. I don't go through the resumes or anything like that prior to be, to be, to rece, to be, to, prior to receiving the finalists. So that, that would be the process, and we will kick that off on, on Monday where the committee chairs will start reaching out. In terms of the other vacancies, and I, and I, I'm sorry, I did not come with the actual number of vacancies versus how many have been filled, but I can say that a number of our other vacancies have been filled at this point. I think that we're feeling pretty, pretty confident in terms of the openings and how they've been filled throughout the schools right now. There probably are a couple of special ed positions that are vacant at this point, which is an ongoing, you know, concern, not just in Winchendon but across the state and really the nation. Special education is the most difficult position right now to fill. So I think those are the outstanding, but at this point, we're fairly comfortable with where we are relative to filling the vacancies prior to the start of school.
Greg? Questions for the superintendent?
If I could, Mr. King, this just came to me about the athletic department, and can you just give us an update on, on how that's going, finding a-
Sure.
An AD?
So that's an athletic director. We, it's a stipended position, so it's not a full-time position. Typically, we would start with that looking in-house, you know, for folks who are in-house interested to, to pick up a stipend. Otherwise, we post that externally. That has been posted externally. And what I can report to you is that I know that we have a number of qualified candidates who have expressed interest and recognize that it is only a stipended position and it's not a full-time position. I, again, I try not to interfere with that process relative to the, to the principal of the high school that is the hiring manager for that, but I do know through conversations that she has multiple candidates who have expressed interest and are, recognize, you know, that it is a stipended position.
So is the lack of an AD, is that jeopardizing our MIA standing at this point? Have you heard anything about that?
Not to my knowledge, no. You know, we have hired coaches or reached out to coaches. It's typically what we try to do before the end of the school year. I mean, the typical process would be to have coaches hired or at least informed, if you will, for hiring. Sometimes the letters don't go out until later when we have a batch of those, but generally, coaches are informed prior to the end of the school year. And, you know, we should be up and running for the following, following year. But not having an athletic director currently is not limiting us through the MIA at this time.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Karen?
Just a lead off from that. I believe that, and I'm not by any way, shape, or form an athletics person at all or expert, but maybe Mr. Finley might know better. But I, I have heard from a couple of parents that there was some concern that our schedules aren't out to other, to whoever it needs to be out to, so maybe check into that, that we need to get that out like ASAP.
Yep. That has been raised to me by the principal, and she's been working on that. Ms. Rickson has been working on, on making sure that the schedule's set up and appropriate.
Okay.
So I am aware of that, and it is being addressed directly.
Okay. Just because I don't want to see us, like, somehow eliminated from anything because of whatever. Again, not my area at all. I do not play in that field.
Understood.
At least I got the, the references correct, right?
Sure.
On another, to go back to, and obviously, we're always going to have a problem with special ed positions, especially the special, special ed positions. My biggest concern is where we are right now. With both the resignation of our director slash pupil services person and the person that has been designated as our point person, is she still our point person?
She is.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that because there was some confusion. And where are we on the, can you give us a brief update on the status of where we are on the complaints that are within the district? And again, I'm going to state that, you know, you and I have had this conversation with the board regarding the fact that a letter may have several incidents in it. So I know that when parents are talking, they're saying, you know, I have several complaints and we have different numbers. So can you give me an idea of where we are at this point with those?
I can. So I think at this point, in terms of the district responsibility, relative to how the process works, you know, which again, we've kind of gone through in detail at, at different times, but where the department reaches out to us to respond and the back and forth, right now, I believe as of yesterday, we have satisfied everything that is expected of us or asked of us by the department at this time. That does not mean that going forward, they don't come back and ask for more, if you will. But at this time, we have submitted everything we need to submit to the department relative to whatever outstanding complaints are there. Again, a number of issues have been closed, you know, or there've been a few as well withdrawn, but those items means that those have been brought to closure, whether it's through non-finding, whether it's through an appropriate intervention on our part, whatever those may be. But at this time, we are completely up to date in terms of what is expected from us from the PRS department.
Okay. And, sorry, I just wanted to make sure that I didn't have any other questions with regard I guess that was it as far as that goes. I guess that was it as far as that goes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Right, very good, thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry, I do have one more, I'm sorry, I do have one more question. Records, that was a big, huge other piece, I knew there was something else, and not just special ed related. I know that a lot of parents asked for their student records, and that is not primarily special ed related. Where are we on satisfying all special edu, or all, sorry, now I'm doing it. It's a long, it's been a long, hot week. Where are we on satisfying all of the requests and satisfying that every parent has received their complete records?
At this point, as of, I'd say yesterday, we have provided the records to the best of our ability. Some of those instances I include and will acknowledge, don't include as an example, and I think we talked about this recently, signature pages on certain items that are being pulled out of the system, that are the electronic versions and those types of things. And so, I recognize that some of those types of things are still outstanding, are specifically in the special ed department, there is a lot of, there's a backlog of filing, quite frankly, is as typical at the end of a school year, and there's a lot of filing going on currently. So, any of those types of pages, I will be looking through or having someone look for those pages after the filing is complete, probably within the next week. But in terms of just overall files and satisfying requests and putting an item in a person's hand, you know, we, I believe we have completed all of those pieces at this time.
So, and I'm going to kind of put you on the spot, because I think we were all included on an email that was, that has to do, and I'm not going to name names.
Okay.
But, you know, there are pieces of files, and this is special ed related, that contain personally, personal health information or personally identifiable information that are printed out and used at meetings. And in, in some cases, they would be, in anywhere else, that would be a HIPAA violation when you lose those documents. I have not, I am HIPAA certified, I was a HIPAA, I was the HIPAA compliance officer
Yep.
when I was practice manager. So, if I had lost that, it would have cost my employer $50,000 for the first instance. Not being able to then provide it or come up with where it went would have then added another $100,000. So, that right there is $150,000. So, I'm concerned that we don't know where at least one piece of information is that is from a meeting last year, last calendar year. And saying that filing is taking place during the summer is not really acceptable to me when you're saying that to me, the filing, the backlog, because if that document was used in the meeting, I would hope that that file, that document, was put into the child's file and then put into either the psych, the school psychologist's, you know, file, or handed over to the sped department and it was put into the child's record immediately. And I understand that some things may not get filed immediately, like the signature pages, because it can take up to 30 to 45 to longer, me being equally responsible for taking longer to get that back. But I think we have a problem, because I'm not sure if we could, as a district, also be in trouble under a HIPAA violation for that. So, that's something that we need to look into. So, I think that's something that we need to think about when we're saying, you know, this is a problem, but I am concerned, and I'm very concerned when I'm seeing this as, you know, parents have gotten what you can find, but, and I'm not saying this is on you, you were not the sped director. I don't, I'm not holding that on you as that piece, you were not the person responsible for filing it, however, the buck stops at your desk, you know, to quote a very famous president. So, in the overall, you're the person I have to talk to. So, you know, we need to come up with, and I know we've had that conversation too, so just, I need you to think broader, so that's why I'm having this conversation with you now. Okay, so, please, please, for the love of God.
I understand.
Find whatever it is, or if you can't, let's figure out how this never happens again, because we need to have where is this and where should it be, period. I'll come in and help.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Karen, thank you, Mr. King. That brings us to our subcommittee reports, as far as I know, we don't have any, any subcommittee reports tonight, not seeing any. We have already covered our new business, which is our Murdoch Trust check presentation. Again, thank you to the Murdoch Trust, Murdoch Fund. And that brings us to old business, which is our superintendent's evaluation. You'll recall that our evaluation of the superintendent for this year is a summative evaluation. It began on May 18th with the announcement of the start of the evaluation, and at that time, our committee received the summative evaluation report and summative evaluation rubric, which is typically used by, or provided to us by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The superintendent provided his report relative to his own self-assessment a couple of meetings ago, and the evaluation, the summative evaluation by the school committee was scheduled to take place on June 15th. There was a request which was voted on by the school committee to delay that evaluation to July 13th, and that is where we find ourselves tonight. Tonight, each member that chooses to do so will have the opportunity to orally share whatever information is contained in their evaluation. The evaluation, of course, is a, not only a written document, but also because of the nature of the superintendent's position and its public nature, we, these are presented publicly during open meetings for exactly this purpose. Each member will then provide the chair with their written evaluation, and the chair's responsibility is to combine those written evaluations into a single evaluation, which will become the final document in perpetuity. So, with that, we will open up the floor for members of the school committee to begin with oral presentations, and rather than calling on anyone at first, I'll open it up for volunteers if there is one.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Mr. President.
I'm actually going to make a motion, and I move that we postpone superintendent's evaluation until a later date.
We have a motion?
Aye, second.
We have a motion and a second to delay the evaluation of the superintendent, is there any discussion?
So, just very briefly, when we moved to, we didn't table this matter, we postponed it, under Robert's Rules of Order, that's called an order of the day, because we had a specific date, and I am just thinking that we do need additional time in light of the recent developments, especially in light of the executive session meeting for tonight. So, I think that it's premature at this point, so I would ask that it be moved to a date specific, the board's choosing.
Okay, thank you, other discussion?
I would concur.
Mr. Chair, do we have a date in mind? The question is, do we have another date in mind?
The maker of motion would be inclined to accept a date or make it our next, our next date, August?
10th?
Yeah, the next one.
10th, 11th. I'm on vacation.
On behalf of only myself, I will share that I do, am unlikely to support the motion. I think we have had ample time, this is actually more time than an evaluation usually takes, and has had the opportunity to not only invite from the public, but also from the superintendent himself, the opportunity to provide information, and enough time for the school committee members to do, you know, our homework in establishing a proper evaluation. I think the time has been adequate, and that this is a major responsibility of the school committee, for which we have already delayed and should not delay anymore. Other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Karen?
If I hadn't asked for a June 15th date, you guys, excuse me, originally, there was no date proposed, so in reality, there was no rush to do this within a timeframe, so I don't think that, not to disagree with you, but I understand what you're saying, but I am going to be honest that I don't have mine with me, it's on my other computer, so I wouldn't be able to give you any feedback tonight anyways, so, because unfortunately, my, I am not apple savvy, we have very much figured that out, so I need to start just bringing my other computer, I think, or have, I need to go and see Mr. Clinton and have him give me, like, a day-long seminar on this computer, so. But in reality, if I hadn't asked for a specific date, so saying that this has taken longer, it really hasn't, we, I've seen evaluations take longer than a month, because it's really only been about a month and a half, two months. Thank you.
Other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Greg?
At this point, I mean, I would like to get the evaluations done as well, but if delay is needed, to accommodate a couple of the members of this committee, I would say, I would go along with it, as long as we set a hard date that no later than the 27th of July.
Okay, thoughts or other discussion?
You've already cited that, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, you've already cited that we don't necessarily need to have the exact completion of the evaluation, and we don't necessarily need to offer publicly, isn't that what you said, our feedback? So, regarding the computer issue, I mean, we have had this on the agenda for a few, so I'm inclined to move forward with it, because I've been prepared since we were supposed to have this done a couple of months ago.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the first part of what you said, I didn't hear you.
I'd like to move forward.
No, but what did you say about not being public?
Mr., the chair said that we didn't necessarily need to, he said it's the prerogative of the committee to offer the information that we have regarding the evaluation, so if you in fact don't have the correct computer, it's not necessarily a...
Okay, because I was going to say, we actually do have to do this publicly, so.
Other discussion, there was a specific date put out?
And I can be in attendance for that date, I will.
There were two dates offered, actually, August 10th and, which is our next meeting, and July 27th were the two proposed dates.
I would move that it's before August 1st, because that's the last date I gave for my seat, and for the feedback, I think whoever is the member coming in, I mean, I've been here for over a year and a half, so I can attest to Mr. King's ability to meet the expectations in the rubric and to address all of the indicators.
You are available on the 27th.
I would make myself available on the 27th.
If we would like to consider a date, we certainly can do so, this would be a new school committee meeting date, excuse me, I am not available on the 27th.
I was going to say, I have to check mine, too.
20th?
I am not available on the 20th, July 25th? Tuesday, July 25th?
Not available that week at all, unfortunately.
What about next week, available? I mean, I'm not, but I'll make it available.
I mean, if, there's only so many dates we can pick, because there are other committee meetings going on here at Town Hall.
What about the 31st?
I'm not available on the 31st. It may be necessary to vote on the motion with the delay to...
Be determined.
Excuse me, Karen?
I'm sorry, with the delay to be, to be determined, sorry, I can't talk.
Yeah, should we vote on the motion?
To be determined by the chair.
First.
Well, it can't be determined by the chair, because...
You know what I'm saying, Karen?
Right.
In consultation with the committee.
Okay, so we have a motion, we're going to leave the motion without a specific date at the moment. The motion is to delay the superintendent's evaluation, that evaluation is unlikely to happen with this delay prior to the departure of Member Jordan. If the delay goes through, we just quickly went through dates, so it would be, it would almost definitely have to happen sometime after August, and so the motion is to delay without a date.
Yes, to postpone, yes.
Yes, postpone without a date.
Can I offer an amendment?
Yes, Greg.
I'd like to move that we amend the motion by clarifying that the evaluation must be done no later than the 31st of July, so that, so that Alicia can be here to give her presentation. I mean, if I have to do it on a Monday, if I have to do it on a Saturday, I'll do it, but I think it should be done before Alicia has to depart the committee.
So, we have a motion for an amendment, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to amend to complete the evaluation prior to July 31st on a date yet to be chosen.
Can we have the discussion?
Yes, absolutely.
So, we've moved this several times, what is the guarantee that this is done and there's not another motion to then delay past my date?
Yeah, I tend to agree, we have definitely had this on the docket for two months, knowing that it's coming and knowing that it has been delayed, knowing that we had the responsibility to complete that evaluation, and that the opportunity to do so had been delayed to tonight. I would still, I continue to believe that it is prudent for this committee and for the process to complete this tonight, rather than delaying to a date that may not be able to be chosen.
So, if I may, Mr. Chair, there's two motions on the table, we need to address the amendment before we can address the main motion, but as the maker of the main motion, I will add this. So, I came on board on May 18th, that was my first appearance, so come June 14th, I received Mr. King's superintendent self-evaluation for the hearing on the 15th. That was the first postponement since I've been a member of this board, and I only feel that it's fair, that if you want me to give a fair evaluation, that Mr. King deserves, then we would address it at a later date. This is our call, this is not a statutory structured case, this is our call, so to suggest that we've been kicking this can down the road is disingenuous. I just want to get it right, I want to make sure that my evaluation has time, that I have time to put into it, because whatever I say, whatever I produce, is going to be for posterity, and it's going to directly affect Mr. King. And I want to be fair, and I want to be reasonable, and I need the time. I'm going to be here for the next two-plus years, I'm committed to this district, I want to get it right, and I want to do the right thing, like Adam LeBlanc said. So, I would ask that we vote on... So, I would ask that we vote on, we have to vote on the amendment to have this done by July 31st. I think Member Jordan was correct that she can still submit her evaluation and then let our new seat, Mr. Findley, comment. Okay, so I don't think we need to jam it in before the 31st. That's not our fault. That's not, that, and that date is a drop-dead date for Member Jordan. It's not a drop-dead date for this district or this school committee because we will go on with a new board and we want to get it right. I want to get it right. Move the vote.
Mr. Chair.
We have a call to move the vote on the amendment. That will conclude our discussion on the amendment. We are now voting on the amendment to the motion. The amendment is to add the specificity of completing the evaluation by July 31st. So, we are voting only on the amendment to add the specificity of July 31st. And we will begin with Alicia, please.
No, nay.
And Greg.
At this point, I'm gonna say nay.
And the chair votes no. David?
Aye.
And Karen?
I'm so confused now.
By July 31st.
So, we're voting to add July 31st.
That is correct.
So, no.
Okay, that motion fails. That brings us back to our original motion. We will pause to see if there is additional discussion. Greg?
Chair, I respect Mr. LaPointe's concerns about getting his evaluation done right. But I wanted to, if we go after August 1st, then how long do we delay it again for Mr. Findley to get his right? I mean, do we put this off till December? I just don't think that we can keep pushing it that far out. So, at this point, I have to oppose the motion.
Other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Karen?
I think, and I'm going to probably say the same thing that David did. I made, I made the motion or I made the suggestion on May 18th. It's right in our meeting minutes, if you read them, to pick the date of June 15th for the original superintendent's evaluation. So, we've only made one motion to delay this prior to tonight because we haven't had a meeting in public since June 15th. So, this will be our second motion to actually delay this. So, in reality, this isn't us kicking it down the road. This is us trying to get this done correctly, as Mr. LaPointe said. And I'm sorry if it's not done by July 31st. You know, there were plenty of meetings that, you know, could happen, couldn't happen. And, you know, we all have time schedules, too, that cannot be met. But I think that Mr. LaPointe said it very well. We are not bound by the August, by the July 31st date. So, I think we have to, I don't have a problem with the August 10th date. I have it done. I didn't, I thought it was in my bag, unfortunately. I made a mistake, I'm sorry. But, and believe me, I want to get this over with, too. So, I would move that, or I would like to see us move the meeting to August 10th. And Greg, I'm with you. I want to get this done before the end of the summer. So, I'm with you. I would like to see us finish this on August 10th.
Mr. Chair, so you sent us an email on May 3rd asking us to have this all done and complete on May 12th. No one objected. You even stated that when we hold the public evaluation of the superintendent on Thursday, May 18th, does that sound reasonable? No one objected. So, I mean, I think that we should move forward with the evaluation tonight. I mean, I just would appreciate just having the deadline met and the work that we were asked to have done in May all set.
Mr. Chair.
Dave?
Just briefly, and I remind everyone here, the table and then people watching, Member Jordan wasn't even present after the May 18th meeting.
Greg?
I saw the work done and could have submitted it. Because we don't have to publicly give the information.
Mr. Chair, point of order. Have Member Jordan address through the chair.
Thank you. Greg?
Okay, first of all, I don't know whether she was here or not, why that would be relevant. And Ms. Cast, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe when you made the motion on May 18th, that your comment that night was that we had delayed and delayed and delayed this long enough that we needed to get it done.
Absolutely.
And so, I agree with that statement. I think we need to get it done.
I absolutely did because you did, and, no, and what I said is we need to set a date. And I did. And then we did and we set it for the 15th and it got postponed. And then, and now we're asking for one more postponement. I don't think that's too much to ask. And if you remember, I didn't, I voted no originally and nobody wanted to take me seriously. I didn't want to do it tonight anyways. So, but, I mean, you know, go forward, don't go forward.
Thank you. We're gonna check quickly. Any other discussion? Okay, we're gonna go with the vote, start at the other end. Karen?
Yes, aye.
Aye.
Aye? Greg?
No.
Nay.
And the chair votes no. The motion does fail. That does bring us to our evaluation. And we will take volunteers for anyone that would like to go first. Otherwise, the chair will choose someone to go first. But if anyone would like to go first, please feel free.
Sure.
Alicia?
So, based on the presentations and feedback I've observed and cited, that's my reasoning for my overall. It's a positive evaluation of Mr. King. He's exceeded or met expectations according to the indicators and standards in the rubric that we were sent. And in my opinion, the only one where I thought there could have been improvement was communication. And again, going back to the presentations, the feedback, and also the information that's been presented to the board as to why I would not give met expectations or exceeded for communication. Overall, Mr. King leads with thoughtfulness, professionalism, and intelligence. I have a great deal of respect for him and I think he is leading the school through a very tumultuous time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Other volunteers?
Mr. Chair.
Greg?
And I'll have to give you my written presentation after tonight because I didn't bring mine either. I, much of my presentation falls along the lines of Ms. Jordan's evaluation. I think that we've had some really tumultuous years, especially with the pandemic. I think that did a superb job in leading us through that. I think overall, we've seen test scores improving. We've seen, I think up until now, anyway, that morale in the school department has been good. I think he's been effective in many ways. The only areas where I think some improvement might be good is in the area of communicating with families and maybe community outreach. But I think overall that Mr. King has done a good job for this district and for the educators, for the staff, and most importantly, for the students. Again, with, as with any district, there's always some room for improvement. And I think Mr. King would more than readily admit to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Other members? All right, we do have an evaluation from Mr. Larry Murphy.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Point of order, since we never discussed last year what was to happen if a member was no longer on the committee and whether they would be able to give their input into the evaluation of the chair, of the superintendent. We actually cannot accept that. And I got that directly from Tracy Novak of Mass Association of School Committees. So, we cannot factor in Mr. Murphy's evaluation. And I will send you that email very, because we did not discuss that when putting together the evaluation parameters.
Mr. Chair.
We cannot actually accept that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Greg?
I'd like to respectfully disagree. As I recall, the chair of the committee mentioned, as we were talking about doing the evaluations, he went through a list of people that would be doing them. And I want to say, he mentioned both Ms. LaPointe and Mr. Murphy as being among those who were, would be allowed to do an evaluation and to present. And I believe, I don't know if it's in the minutes or not, I don't have them in front of me. It is in the minutes, I'm told.
And that's
Oh, go ahead, Karen.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, that's what led me to ask Ms. Novak that question. Because that was not actually brought up as part of our discussion in putting together how we were going to run the evaluation, which I had pointed out at one point that we needed to do. But I was told that we had done that, even though we actually didn't. I actually had asked her, Mr. LaPointe, had asked if he was allowed to have any input into the superintendent's evaluation. And in answering that, Mr. Forsyth had answered that, you know, that as a new member, he would be able to have, take part in it and Mr. Murphy would be able to take part in it. And that is in the minutes and you can refer back to them. And that is exactly why I asked Ms. Novak the question, because I wanted clarification on that. So, I did get that clarification from our Mass Association of School Committees representative and she got that from their legal counsel. So...
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Karen. Greg?
I just want to say that when Mr. Forsyth, our chair, mentioned it that night, there was no objection from anyone on this committee to either Mr. LaPointe or Mr. Murphy submitting an evaluation. So, I don't see any problem. I don't see why there should be a problem. We know it's probably gonna be positive and that may be why there's such a debate on it. But I think you should be allowed to present it.
Mr. Chair, response through you to Mr. Vine?
Yep.
Mr. Vine, I raised this issue on my own. I wanted to make sure that I was able to do an evaluation. So, there wasn't an objection to mine because I was duly elected and that has been determined that I can give an evaluation and I will give one tonight. But the question was raised, no objection to Mr. Murphy because we needed to find out as to whether a non-duly-elected person can be part of this evaluation. And I think we got the answer from Member Cast. But if we need to get clarification, I would suggest that we send this to counsel and have them rule on it. Because I feel that, you know, if we're gonna do this evaluation right, we're gonna do it right. Right? And, you know, if you don't have your documents before you and you're gonna submit them later, then I think the entire board should be able to submit them later. And if Mr. Murphy has determined that he's able to submit an evaluation as a non-duly-elected member of this board, which goes against all logic and common sense, just like the vote for Member Jordan, she could not vote to replace herself, just common sense, I say that we just move that. Because if it's allowed, we've got until July 31st to hear Mr. Murphy's evaluation and whether it's favorable or not, regardless, it has to have some weight. It has to have some legal meaning. So, that's what I would ask, Mr. Chair. And I can do it in form of a motion or just at your, at your direction.
If it pleases all members of the board, I might suggest that we forego the oral presentation of Mr. Murphy's evaluation this evening. That is, of course, the option that we as board members have to orally present or not orally present. The written evaluation, if it is determined as the suggestion was made by our legal counsel to be allowable, then it would be incorporated into the final evaluation anyway. If that is something that the board is willing to entertain, we can skip at least the oral presentation and then we'll, I will get legal clarification for sure from counsel. And if it is allowable, I will incorporate it. If it is not allowable, then I will not. Is that fair?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Karen?
I'm going to say this for the record out here in public. I don't have great faith in the legal counsel that is used by this district. I trust the legal counsel that is used by Mass Association of School Committees. So, I'm going to, and I don't, honestly, I don't care whether it's good or bad review. That doesn't faze me one way or another. I have good things and maybe not so good things to say. But the fact of the matter is, is that, you know, I think that anybody that knows me knows that I like to make sure that we are doing things correctly. And that was my concern. So, any indication that I'm doing this just because, oh, it might be a good review? We know, we know which way this is going, that's fine. But I have no problem with us holding off on Mr. Murphy's oral presentation. However, I'm just, I just want it on the record that our, the legal counsel for this district has proven time and time again that they are not the best. So, I do stand by what I was told by the Mass Association of School Committees and I will stand by what they send us. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Please do send me
I will. I'm looking for it right now because I was gonna read it to you. But Tracy sends out all the mask information, so it's really hard to search on her name, fortunately.
All right, other presentations?
Superintendent evaluation?
Yes.
Would you like to go, Mr. Chair?
No.
Do you defer? Okay, so here it goes. So, there's four areas that we look at in determining superintendent's evaluation. And standard one is instructional leadership. Standard two is management and operations. Standard three is family and community engagement. And standard four is professional culture. I want to start with the instructional leadership and all of my evaluation is based upon everything that I have learned since I've been on this board since May 18th, as well as having four students in this district. Starting with the instructional leadership, I would have to say that out of those four standards, that's probably where Mr. King is doing the best. And then the reason I say that is the instructional leadership is what's keeping the school together. It's what got us through the COVID. But that's not the only standard that's important. The other three is equally as important. In that particular standard, I'm gonna give him a needs improvement. And the reason for the instructional leadership is that, you know, the efforts were made. We heard a lot about the redistricting plan. We heard a lot about the, the redistricting plan, and how that process went through, and I was only at the tail end of it. But in that particular process, the, the leadership that was required, while I believe it's needed in the district, I came to the conclusion, just on reading emails, talking to people in town, listening to Mr. King talk about redistricting, listening to my Board members, I came to the conclusion that that wasn't a good plan. And I'm not an educational professional, I am a educator, I was a teacher for 10 years. But I wasn't in leadership roles, but I did come to that conclusion based upon the facts after I gathered, gathered the facts. Secondly, on the standard of the management and operations portion of this, since I've been here, and I came in at a tumultuous time, I came in here when, when, when the building was pretty much already on fire. And what I was seeing was that the person responsible for putting out that fire wasn't putting out the fire. And, and in the management and the operations, just look at what happened when that built-in building burned down. It burned down because we, we lost our administration. And when I say that, I don't say the whole administration, Toy Town Elementary is intact. But at the top and at the bottom, the administration was decimated. And the reason for that has to go to the top. Mr. King is responsible for hiring, he's responsible for firing. I raised this issue my second meeting, and I asked Mr. King if he thought that his hiring and firing wasn't effective. Because the school committee, we get to oversee that effectiveness of hiring and firing. We, we don't oversee, we don't do the hiring and firing. But we can determine, there may be something wrong with the hiring and the firing. If you're hiring on this end, and you're firing on this end, then maybe there's a problem. And I think that comes under the manage, the management and operations. And I'm going to leave that at unsatisfactory. The third area is family and community. When I ran for this position, I had a three-legged stool, and that stool was curriculum, community, and children. All three of them need to be standing for that stool to be effective. But what I'm seeing here is that the community leg was kind of knocked out during all of this. And what I direct your attention to is not all the brave parents and teachers who came and spoke against and for this district, and for Mr. King. But I'm talking about a message that went out to Parents Square at the end of the school year, which is intended to tout the accomplishments and, and everything good that's happening in this district. But when you stick in a phrase that said, with the exception of distractions in the community, you have just attacked those very parents, those very taxpayers, calling them a distraction. That is a divisive term. And we, we serve for no pay whatsoever. I'm a taxpayer, I'm a business owner, and I'm a parent of three, now three, children in the school district. And we have to remind teachers and administrators that they earn their livelihood through the taxpayer. I was a police officer and a teacher, and always remembered where my salary was coming from. When I bought a new car, I was very appreciative of the taxpayer who paid my salary. I never forgot where my money was coming from. And I think that was lost in that end-of-the-year Parents Square message, that if you stand up, you're going to get beat down. That's, that's in a communist society. In America, we speak up, to be heard. The squeaky oil, right? The grease, squeaky oil always gets the grease. And what I've seen in the last two months is some amazing grease. The people that came in here and spoke on behalf of their children, on behalf of their teachers, was amazing. It was incredible. It makes me proud to go down to Cumberland Farms to get my milk, fill up my tank, and speak to somebody, a parent, a teacher. Somebody that is in the system. I'm hearing a lot, I'm hearing a lot, I'm hearing good, I'm hearing bad. And I think that that community leg of that stool is, is very, just as important as the curriculum and the children. Because without it, we don't have any support for this school district. So in the community and engagement, unsatisfactory. Professional culture. My fellow Board members and I received an email about, about a week ago. And to this day, it still disturbs me that we received an email that was encrypted. So it couldn't be identified who this person was. But what this person did tell us in a 5,000-word essay with no punctuation, because they didn't want to be detected in their writing style, and in this email that was, again, encrypted. You couldn't ask for a better protection of privacy than sending each one of us an email. Because that's not released unless somebody does a FOIA and requests it. So you, I mean, we got emails from teachers, and they put their name on it. But what's disturbing is that this teacher identified himself or herself as a teacher in our school system. That is disturbing any way you look at it. So I think, what, where does that come from? Where there's a culture of fear and retaliation. And I've said this before, and I'll say it again, the culture of fear and retaliation comes from the top. It has to. The leadership of the top sets the stage for growth down below of our teachers and administrators, as well as leading by example. So when I heard teachers that they were fearful of being retaliated against, and they said this in open, Erin Boucher, Mrs. Boucher, said that in open meeting. She said that, she said, in fear of reprisal, retaliation, I'm still going to speak on behalf of my students. So the professional culture as I see it, as a former educator, as a business owner, as an advocate for hundreds and hundreds of clients, I find that the leadership, just since I've been here, has, it's fallen apart. Now, was it ever here? I don't know, I wasn't here. Mr. King was only superintendent for a year. That's a lot, it's a tall order to ask for somebody to come after a COVID, after an epidemic, and come into, you know, from a principal, come into superintendent. And I agree with Mr. Foster, right? It's going to take longer. But we have to make sure we have the right captain, we have the right manager. And I'm seeing it, not just through my eyes, I'm seeing it through all of the eyes of the emails that we've received, all of the people I've talked to, all of the events that I've gone to. I've been to many wonderful events at the end of the school year. I'm fortunate because I'm in town, and I'm the boss. And just don't tell that to my wife. But I just think that the professional culture needs to be fixed, and my rating on that is unsatisfactory. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Karen?
Mr. Chair. So I'm kind of winging it a little, because I do not have it in front of me. I said I'm winging it a little bit, because I do not have it in front of me. I do want to say first and foremost, and I like to start out positively, that I do think that, in a lot of ways, I, I think that Mr. King has always tried to put and portray Winchandon very positively. I think that he does try to put the best foot forward of the district at all times. I do think that he does try to represent us very well. And I think he does that as best he can, despite everything that the district has been through. And, and I say that as somebody, when I asked why nobody was running for the seat that I now sit in, I was told, because the schools suck. Which I, I object to, because if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. So, you know, I do think that, you know, I, I was lucky enough to meet him when he was still a principal. I think that he was phenomenal. I know that he is well-beloved by students. He definitely has his cheering section with the students. He, he is definitely a personable person, and I have, I do think that he does try to get input from certain parties. My, my one thing that I would say is that countless times, and I say this as somebody who has now sat on, sat in this chair for three and a half years, countless times I've had to say, well, are we doing, you know, a community meeting? Are we meeting and talking to the teachers, just like with the reorg? I mean, to present it to the school committee before we ever had any kind of, any kind of discussion with community groups or focus groups on it was a problem. The fact that this board wanted to vote on that, that night in December, was absolutely unbelievable to me. And that's not just for you, Mr. King, that's on us. I do want to state that we need to take a lot of responsibility, and I say this as somebody that, when we hired him, as Mr. LeBlanc pointed out, he was one of three candidates presented to us. And I think that we set him up for failure. And, you know, that's not on Alicia, or Ryan, or Mr. LePointe. The members that voted on Mr. King wanted him very badly. And when I tried to steer this committee to put guidance in place, they did not want to listen. And I'm sorry to say that, so this is partially an evaluation of us too. So I think that not only, I think we did unsatisfactorily, not just Mr. King. So I want to say that very clearly. So I want to apologize to you, Mr. King, because I think in some ways we failed you too. But I also think that you have failed this, this district in some ways. And I say that, and, and you know, you know where I'm going. Family and community engagement has always been my mantra. And I think, you know, Ms. Harris pointed it out, until, you know, until a meeting is coming up or until they came and spoke, they weren't getting responses. I have seen the proof, not opinions. I have seen that firsthand, because they have sent all of this to all of us. And anybody who denies that and says that, you know, anything different hasn't read everything that has been sent to us by the multiple people that came before us. So I think that is something that definitely is unsatisfactory and needs improvement. As far as management and operations, you know, I, I can only speak to what I see by what is happening. I'm obviously not in the building with you, I don't, I don't try to be. But obviously, we're falling apart for a reason, and, you know, something's missing. And so, you know, that definitely needs improvement. And I'm going to say, in general, I would give you a needs improvement score. Except for in, in family, in, in communication, I would also say you need to do better communicating with this board. Because this board, if it has not been made clear to you, you are not the boss of us, we are the boss of you. And that needs to be clarified, because I think in the past, this board has, has allowed you to, to act more the other way. And it's time for us to take the reins back and give you guidance and, and be a true partner to you, instead of just not giving you what you need. And we need to work more collaboratively with you in that regard. So I'm going to say needs improvement. Like I said, not everything I'm saying is bad. I think that you could improve, and we could go very far. But my biggest concern is, since the day that you were hired here, you have been applying other places. So I don't think Winchandon, I, I, we can go and get all the articles that say where you were finalists. So, I mean, you've been applying other places, I don't feel like Winchandon is the place you want to be, and that's my concern. So, you know, in the long run, you know, is this really where you want to be? So I think that's a question for everybody to think about on this board and with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all of the members. I will take a moment and provide feedback, as the other members have, on my perception of Mr. King's performance during the last period of time. For this review period, I rate Mr. King as overall proficient. Within this evaluation, there is a mix of areas where there is exceptional, exceptional work, and there is an area of improvement. In the area of curriculum and instruction leadership, as, as some of the other members said, Mr. King has shined. He's set a district improvement goal, overseen the work of dedicated staff to accomplish and work towards those goals, and he has held himself in the district responsible for meeting those goals. This is not a superintendent's job to do alone. This is a team of professionals, and in our district, we have professionals that this superintendent has led. As part of the joint goal-setting in the 2223 academic year that took place between the superintendent and the school committee, turnaround practices for instruction in math, excuse me, in math and English language arts were identified as significant needs of the district. Based on any objective review of our district, I think it would be clear to say that those goals were appropriately identified. To address these priorities, Mr. King established a data-informed math and ELA instruction set of goals, many of which have been completed or, or are in progress at the time of this evaluation. This is evidenced in the, in the implementation of the new elementary literacy phonics work, instruction professional development for teachers that has occurred, the illustrious mathematics, curriculum adoption and implementation that has been hailed by this board, standardized and improved student learning assessment tools, STAR as an example, and student outcomes demonstrated by the MCAS test scores and other in-school testing that isn't quite where it should be, but is improving. The Board has previously complimented Mr. King on the inclusion of curricular quality, the alignment to standards, and the vertical alignment in this system's district for its improvement plan. Those things were contained in his formative evaluation that took place a year ago. Going forward, additional progress can be made on student learning outcomes, especially as measured by MCAS assessments and other academic assessments, but this district is not in crisis, this district is improving. To improve, whoops, excuse me, one moment. Did I skip all over?
You skipped a page.
To promote the learning and growth of all of our students and the success of all staff, it is essential for a school district to ensure a safe, efficient, and effective learning environment. Nationwide, the last few years have included increasing social and emotional needs of students due in part to the isolation and learning loss of the COVID-19 pandemic, but also the result of things that have happened within our society and the way the, the nation has developed, the, the growth of our children. To meet these increases in social, emotional needs, not only caused by COVID-19, but for all students' needs, Mr. King has overseen the implementation of the CARE-SOLOs Mental Health Service Coordination Program, the Behavioral Intervention Professional Development with Jessica Minahan, a board-certified behavior analyst and special educator that any district is glad to have as part of their PD. He has also sustained, excuse me, and also the sustaining of additional social worker staffing in the schools. Safety in schools has also become a national issue in recent years, which Mr. King has recognized and sought to address head-on with the development of a district-wide crisis management plan and district-wide risk assessment with the Winchandon Police Department. management plan and district-wide risk assessment with the Winchendon Police Department. This is a national norm, this is a national best practice, and not only is the school district using the resources that exist in our town, the Winchendon Police Department, but also doing so using national norms. As mentioned in Mr. King's formative evaluation last year, he's been successful in bringing high-quality and successful staff, including classroom teachers, a new math coach, the district's business manager, and more. Additionally, Mr. King has identified intentional investments in new positions in the next academic year that directly align with the district's needs and the goals that this committee agreed to with the superintendent. Most notably, this includes two new special education teacher positions that did not previously exist. In recent months, there have been calls from our school community to question some of the personnel decisions made by Mr. King. Personnel changes are always challenging for a school district and a superintendent. As such, decisions are rarely universally agreed with. I'm thankful to have had Mr. King making personnel decisions based on his professional expertise, not mine or anyone else's. And despite the fact that these decisions might have been unpopular, he still went ahead and made them. Fiscally, Mr. King has demonstrated a great prowess for the establishment and management of budgets that align with our district priorities, and the use of creativity and capitalizing on existing new resources to meet the needs of our students and our district. This is evident in the strategic use of federal ESER grant funds, the Murdoch Fund, trust funds that we received this evening, and the Robinson-Broadhurst monies. These funds were capitalized on and used to address immediate district needs while also creating additional experiential learning opportunities for Winchendon students, as I mentioned at the top of our meeting. Further, the arrival of additional state funding from the Commonwealth Student Opportunity Fund had been invested wisely in FY24. They weren't blown on frivolous things. They were used to target the intentional district needs, again focused, in this case, on special education. In the area of family and community engagement, there is room for improvement. We've heard that this evening from a couple other members. In recent months, concerns have been expressed to school committee members by parents, students, and others about the engagement and service received in the district. Specifically, the consistency, accuracy, privacy, and timeliness of processes and responses in the Special Education Department have been identified as areas for improvement. As superintendent, Mr. King is responsible for creating and maintaining the workforce and environment that is conducive to meeting required state mandates, including but not only limited to, excuse me, including but not only limited to special education timelines. This reviewer has witnessed Mr. King's responsiveness to parent concerns and has been impressed by his ability to meet so many parent requests and engage in so many district and community events. However, the concern from some members of the public have continued and represent an opportunity to improve in the area of family and community engagement. With areas of success and areas of improvement, I rate Mr. King's performance during this review as proficient and thank him for his efforts to date. And I believe that concludes our oral presentations for the evaluation this evening. I will happily take from any school board member, any written documents that they would like to have included as part of the evaluation. That can absolutely happen in person if you have them, they can happen by email. If you need to get them to me in hard copy, you know, later tonight, that's fine. But I would like to have them by tomorrow so that I can begin putting them together. So if anyone has them tonight, I'm happy to take them. If anyone else would like to provide them, please do so.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen, uh, Ms. Cast.
I'm going to apologize. I will not have it to you tonight, because after this, I'm going home and celebrating the rest of my birthday.
Yes, happy birthday.
And I will not have it to you tomorrow, because tomorrow is Ronan's birthday, and we have plans. So I will get it to you over the weekend, though, okay?
Happy, happy birthday to both of you.
Thank you.
That brings us to our item agenda number 10, future agenda items, future agenda items that we want to put on the docket tonight. Okay, and that brings us to closing member comments. For the public, we will have our closing member comments, and then we will be going into executive session if the board so chooses to do so. That executive session is an executive session that we plan to adjourn from, so our closing comments will really most likely be the last thing for this evening. And we will do closing comments, starting with Karen, please.
So first of all, I'd like to thank everybody that came out on yet another hot night, both the parents and all the staff. I appreciate everything you said, and I appreciate the support that you show for your leader, for the leader of our district. That doesn't sound right. Anyways, I appreciate the support you show for Mr. King and for the district as a whole. I think that, of course, I was going to say, when Ms. Frye came up, I didn't know why she needed to introduce herself, because I think everybody knows her, and Mr. Foster too. I think you're two very well-known figures, so I wanted to thank you for coming. But I also want to especially thank the parents who are here despite it being, you know, a very busy season, because I know it's also the beginning of all the fun, wonderful season of summer sports and everything else that's going on. But I also want to thank all of, and I didn't get to this last time, so I want to make sure I do it now, I want to thank all of the staff of all of our schools for the great work they've done over the past year. Despite everything else that is going on within our district, I am so proud of all the work that our district does every day. And I think that it's amazing that, you know, we do do as well as we do every day with limited resources given to us by the government. I keep hoping that they will give us more money. I keep trying. I am bugging our legislatures, please know that. So I just want you to know that you are appreciated, I think of you often. I constantly have, some of you will know what this means, red for public ed. I always have something red for public ed on me or with me. So just know that I hope you keep up the good fight. I hope you get to enjoy some of the summer off, and I hope that you get a beach day. I have yet to do that, because apparently weekends are not allowed to have sunny days this year. So I hope everybody enjoys what little sunshine we're getting, and I hope everybody, I hope parents tag your it and have fun with those kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I would like to just tag along with member Cast McBride's comments, and I want to thank the staff and the administration for being a part of the LePointe Heart Village, because we've entered into a partnership as parents and their first teachers, but we have to let them go at some point. And as a former educator, I always remember the smiles on the parents' faces at the end of the school year, or should I say, the teachers, and then the parents at the beginning of the school year. But it truly is a collaboration, and I know my children have benefited from that. My approach to this position has not been to target anybody in the classroom, anybody supporting the classroom. And my only concern is the school committee. I'm responsible for the supervision of the superintendent. So that's where my focus has been, because that trickles down. It doesn't trickle up, right? It trickles down. So I also want to share something, because good things are happening in our district. My students, my children wouldn't still be here if there wasn't. I want to share something with you that shows a good thing that's happening this summer. As a board member, a member on the Board of Directors at the Clark YMCA, I'm pleased to announce that our executive director, Michael Quinn, obtained a grant through the Y networking, and it was a grant that was for a collaboration with our Winchendon Public Schools, and it was specifically targeting math students and those students that could benefit from additional instruction over the summer. So I would like to read a letter into the record, if I may, Mr. Chair, from Shawna LePointe, who is our math coach in our district, and she is the one solely responsible, along with some educators that work with her, but bringing this to fruition. Because had she not pursued this, that grant money just would have went unspent. So, "Dear School Committee Members, I hope this letter finds you well. I am writing to provide you with an overview of the Clark Summer Program, which we are excited to offer to our students this summer. This program aims to provide additional instruction in reading and math to students who would benefit from extra support in these areas. I am delighted to inform you that the Clark YMCA has acquired a grant to fund the program. This grant has allowed us to provide this valuable opportunity to our students at no cost to them or their families. We are immensely grateful for the support and generosity of the grant provider, as it enables us to enhance our students' academic skills and provide a well-rounded summer experience. The Clark Summer Program is a five-week program designed to enhance students' academic skills and foster growth. We have targeted some of our youngest learners in grades one and two this year, recognizing the importance of early intervention and support. The program is led by a team of dedicated and experienced teachers, Mrs. Cheryl Jordan, Mrs. Lisa Barret, and Ms. Sarah St. Pierre. Their expertise in education and commitment to student success make them invaluable assets to this initiative. The program consists of academic tutoring on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. During these sessions, students will receive focus instruction tailored to address their specific needs in reading and math. We believe that this targeted approach will enable students to gain confidence and make significant progress in these subjects. Beyond the tutoring session, students can participate in the Camp Clark activities, which are free. The camp operates from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., providing a well-rounded summer experience. We have also made provisions for before and after camp hours, ensuring extended supervision at no additional cost, thus offering a convenient and safe experience for all participants. Camp Clark offers a range of engaging activities, including daily swimming lessons. Students can develop new skills and build lasting memories with their peers, and we firmly believe combining academic instruction and recreational activities will result in a well-rounded and enriching, richening summer experience for the students. The Clark Summer Program, made possible by the grant obtained by the Clark YMCA, supports our students' academic growth and provides opportunities for personal and social development. By offering this program, we aim to bridge educational gaps, boost student achievement, and promote a love for learning. Sincerely, Shawna LePointe." Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That's fantastic.
That is.
What's the grant?
It comes from some of the Y's networking.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Awesome.
They got part of the grant, and then this grant was offered to the school at no cost.
So they don't do math all day, right?
No, they don't.
Okay.
Greg, please.
There are a number of things I'd like to say, but since we have an executive session coming up, I'm just going to say thank you to all the folks that came tonight and spoke. Whether we agree or disagree, it's important that folks participate, so we do appreciate your coming. And with that, I will pass it on to Ms. Jordan.
Thank you. So, again, thank you to the people who spoke. Teachers, staff members, you have my eternal gratitude. Administrators as well. Education is not easy, and doing what's right is not always easy. So through my time here, I've learned a great deal. I wish I could stay in Winchendon, but professionally, I've accepted a job out of the area, and I won't be a resident of this community, therefore I would have, I have to give up my seat. So I just leave the committee and everyone. Please lead with listening and respond with compassion and without sarcasm and condescension. Again, with gratitude, best wishes, and keep on keeping on.
Thank you. And we'll pause for a moment to say that this could be, we talked tonight about a whole bunch of meetings at the end of July, but if that doesn't happen, this could be Ms. Jordan's last meeting. And on behalf of the committee and on behalf of the town and the members of the school district, we wanted to say thank you for your service. And a lot has been said tonight, so I don't have any closing comments, except to say happy birthday, Karen and Ronan.
Thank you.
And that moves us on to item 12. Happy to take a motion if there is one.
Mr. Chair.
Greg?
I'd move to enter into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel, superintendent of schools, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements and to adjourn from executive session.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Karen?
Can we take a 10-minute break?
Let's do that in executive session, if you don't mind.
Whatever.
Let's get in there, let these folks go home.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, other discussion? Okay, and we'll take the vote on the motion to go into executive session, starting with Karen?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Alicia?
Yay.
The chair votes aye, and we are in executive session. Thank you very much.